There you go.
Awesome, thank you. Terry Hobush will appreciate it.
About the same.
It would be good. Who've had a lot of.
That's good.
Yeah. You get. Oh.
College.
We just didn't have that.
No.
Yeah.
That was.
We're talking about. Like in my place.
See, you do.
Yeah.
I don't know.
What did I get? Okay. Yeah, I get you. Thank you. Yeah, no problem.
This is very good.
As I said, yeah, thank you.
Do you mind if I just kind of give everybody a rundown of what these?
Oh, I I hope so.
Um, so each packet is paper clipped and um, so you have twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three statistics. Um, if you go through, so just as an example, if you go through each packet, if you unclip your twenty-two, so there's six different parts to these. The first one, part one, is going to be your general information and bookings. And your part two is going to be. Um, your releases and your corrections beds and them. Part three is going to be the transportation. Part four is going to be staffing levels. Five is going to be programs, medical and mental health. And part six is going to be your assaults and sexual misconducts inside the facility. So each packet is just, I wanted to give you guys an extra so you can see over the past two years what the statewide stats are um, for each correctional facility under the shared clock.
Could you mind going through? Starting on part one and just doing kind of the comparison of Brandon, Bonnie?
Yeah, absolutely. So you want to do twenty twenty-two or twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay. So the current year, um, the county population. And Grant, do you want Lake too? I think Lake's a pretty good comparison as well.
Okay.
As far as, so just the three counties, um, I think we're comparable population. So Grant County's current population, according to the January first statistics is seven thousand two hundred ninety-eight in population. Their jail is annually funded at one four, one point four five million. Um, and their total bookings was seven hundred and forty-two. That doesn't include like if you're housing, that's just how many people have been booked into the facility. Um, just on a male female ratio, their males are eighty-five point seven percent and their female population is fourteen point three percent. Um, Harney County's population is seven thousand five hundred and forty-three. Um, the jail is budgeted one million fifty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-five. Their total annual bookings is four hundred. Uh, male population is seventy-six percent, female population is at twenty-four percent. Lake County's population, general population is eight thousand five hundred and sixty-one. Their jail is budgeted at one point four million. They had four hundred and eighty-two total bookings. Their male population was seventy-one point six and their female population was twenty-eight point four. And the only reason I bring up the male and female population is it really does matter in a correctional facility because like ours only has four different housing units to separate the male and females. And so kind of having those numbers to know how many beds you need for females and how many beds you need for male, I think is pretty important.
He brought Sam.
Yes.
What's the eleven forty-five?
Eleven forty-five is the DUI, uh, felony DUIs. So felony DUIs that get sent to the local correctional facility um, that would normally go to prison. We can get a financial reimbursement from the DOC on those. Any questions on the section or the part one?
Do those who measure eleven, do they require additional attention, displacement?
No.
Okay.
Um, it there's a classification system. The measure elevens will typically clock by higher, especially, you know, depending on the crime. So if they are, you know, violent and they continue their violent behavior in the facility, then they're going to be a higher custody level, um, which we really don't have the facility to house those individuals, even though we do. Um, we have the old jail bars. So if they're violent, if they're throwing things at the staff or trying to assault staff, it just, it's harder to keep our staff care locally safer with those um, more violent offenders.
Without going into too much detail, don't you have one of them in Grant County right now?
We do, yes. Um, and we've had over this past year, I don't have to say that, but the DA should be able to kind of explain, over this past year, we've seen a huge increase of more violent offenders being arrested here in Harney County.
Yeah, I mean, and actually, uh, yeah, we have, I mean, if you notice the measure eleven. And I I just noticed anecdotally speaking with the previous, you know, with Judge Kramer, Harney County historically has had more higher number of court filings in this county. State courts would confirm that, but Grant County historically has had more violent crime than we have, but unfortunately ours is starting to kind of have an uptick. But that that actually leads me to a question I have, Rob, Sam, and I'm sorry.
Yep, no.
But the total bookings, that's on the initial arrest, correct? Because that's what Amy and I are looking at. Because if we file more cases.
That's bookies, that's total book, no, that's not essential, that's all the things. All of our bookings, that's what our system report generated.
Okay.
So hopefully if somebody come down from court and do their initial booking, that comes worth a bit of.
Okay.
Does it count if someone's picked up on a warrant out of county too?
Yes.
And without going down this trail, the nature of the violent crimes, just do you have any comment about, I mean, I mean, there there can be violence here, violence here, and is it?
Per second crimes.
Right, uh, like assaults are we talking or?
Yes, assaults. Um, we've had a couple of attempted murders. We've had, how many? I'm trying to.
We don't have any, we, the last year, we yeah, it's like murder, attempted murder, and then like assaults. We haven't had any like sex like crimes. There's one individual, but that's not a hands-on victim. It's.
There was one hands-on victim this past year that you just sent for several years to prison.
Was that? I don't know, sex assault thing. He was just a violent one.
No, there was.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
And do you think these are fueled by a particular drug or not, in in a lot of cases or not?
I think.
Particular substance?
The assaults are. I think the assaults are more.
And which which drug or drugs might that be that?
I would say like methamphetamine.
Thank you.
And, yeah, the sex assault thing, that they're kind of just a different beast.
Yeah, they are different, but the more major assaults perceived. So then on page two or part two, this is going to give you the adults in custody posting, um, bail. How many are forced released? Um, and then how many beds each facility has. So in comparison, we'll start with Grant. Um, and just to go back for a minute, since they started the SB forty-eight with the, um, the no bail free release, um, we've really seen a decrease in those um, in our bail statistics over the years. So if you're wondering why, say on twenty twenty-two, we had a considerable amount of bail money that we received, this year is going to, the twenty twenty-three is going to show that it's it's not a whole lot in comparison. So just to answer that question, if it comes up later for you guys. Um, so I think our interest is mainly the jail beds, um, designing capacity. Grant County has forty-one beds. Harney County has twenty-three beds. And Lake County has eighteen beds. So what I see when I look at those numbers is so you've got, if you compare part one to part two, Grant County has forty-one beds and they are budgeted at one point two million, a little over one point two, and then Harney is at sorry, I misspoke. They're at one point four and then Harney is at one million fifty-one, and then Lake is at one point four and Lake County has eighteen beds. So you've got three counties that are very similar in size and you have anywhere from eighteen to forty-one beds and their budget is staying kind of in those areas between one million and one point four million. And the and the staffing levels, we'll get to that, but the staffing levels are pretty similar. Um, so on part three, this is transport. Um, this more or less just kind of affects the staffing levels and our vehicle maintenance and fuel. So this is just kind of some extra information for you. And part four is staffing. So Grant County current FTEs is nine. Harney County current FTEs is ten and Lake County's current FTEs is twelve. And then the rest of it is just additional um, statistics. We've got programs, medical, mental health. That's definitely something that Harney County has struggled over the years in getting up and running it from programs for um, drug treatment, mental health, those type of things. So it would be nice to have a facility that we can start providing some of those services. And then um, our mental, our medical, mental health. And then the last part six is our assaults and our sexual misconduct. Now, these are stats of events that occurred inside the jail. Um, so as you can see, Grant County had zero assaults or sexual misconducts reported between either um, a adult in custody to adult in custody, adult in custody to staff and staff to adult in custody is how they ran. So um, Harney County, we had four total assaults. Um, they were inmate on inmate assaults. We had no staff, vice versa, and inmate assaults. And Lake County had one and it was a inmate on staff assault.
Can we go back to part four real quick?
Absolutely.
On the total FTEs.
Mm-hmm.
I'm really denying you on this. There must be part-time people in as well. How do you run a twenty-four seven jail of ten people? Isn't that hard?
Well, it can run with eight if you're on the twelve-hour shifts. So you do twelve and so it's four twelve-hour shifts and they get four days off. So our minimum kind of staffing here would be eight FTEs. So and then the ten includes me being the jail commander. So I have eight FTEs that run in the jail, they're staffed in the jail. I have one that does um, courtroom security, transports and relief in the jail and was working on opening the scales. And so that's what that position was for and then my position. So we're four in the jail at eight. And then a relief position in the league.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And and for Grant County, um, the nature of their jail is much different. Does their staffing for the jail itself? Um, because they have more beds, you know, and they may have people inmates from other areas. Um, but yet their staffing can be.
The same.
With, okay.
So a lot of it really depends on the design of the facility. So if you have um, a facility that has a lot of blind spots or a lot of corridors, you're going to have to increase some of those staffing levels. Our concern, our number one priority and concern is making sure that the staff and the inmates and the public are safe. That's our top priority. Um, so we want to make sure, especially Priya, under the Prison Right Elimination Act, we need to make sure that we can try to maintain that visual contact um, with the inmates to make sure that they're safe from each other or whatnot. So the Grant County jail design is kind of similar to like a pizza. If you were in the middle of the pizza, you could see the whole thing. And so that's their design. There's some older jails like this one that were set up with more corridors. And so it's a safer facility all around for the staff and the inmates and um, it allows us to keep the same staffing numbers.
Okay, thank you.
And then.
Wanted to get that out there for this discussion, yeah.
I know there's been recommendation just because of our property sizes that we were during our initial kind of a property assessment that we did. There was some discussion about like this property maybe building like a multi-floor jail. But you have to really consider that if you do something like that, your staffing numbers are going to increase, which your staffing is the biggest part of your budget. And so I don't think that that would be a good idea for Harney County.
Yeah, I had a chance today to go look at the jail.
In Grant County?
Grant County and, uh, quite a contrast from what we have here.
Yes, we're the oldest jail, right? In the state?
We're pretty close.
Okay, I thought we were nineteen sixty-four-ish.
Nineteen sixty-two, I believe.
Can I ask then, why if they have less staff? More beds? Why is their budget almost fifty percent of the amount of ours?
Good question.
So I I ask something similar to that. Um, one of the things that Grant County is doing is because their beds are never a hundred percent full. Um, they take folks from, uh, Union County. Sometimes they'll pick up stuff from Wheeler County.
They do contracts.
Contracts are great now. Harney, you guys want to hear?
But why, but why does that push their budget up to one point four versus ours at one, essentially one flat?
I don't.
Because they have less staff?
They have less staff. We we run pretty comparable as far as their, um, their beds being full. Um, I don't know what their contracts look like. So if their food, you know, if they're spending money, more money in their food. I know they run like in-house where we do contracts. I don't know what their medical and mental health look like.
Okay.
So if their contracts are more than their, that could be a reason for it. I don't, and um, you know, I don't know what their staff are making, so I don't know whether.
Do you, do you know if the facility is fully paid for?
I don't. I would have to believe those built in nineteen ninety-seven at two point eight million.
Okay, I I mean, just thought I'd ask, just in case it's still got some kind of a.
Right.
Obligation.
Yes.
Hopefully not that long.
It's either two thirty or two eight. It was a two point.
Okay.
That would have been, I wish the county would have done that then.
At that time, I believe they were contracting with the federal government on
Right.
Some beds and they were making some pretty good money off of that.
And I don't know anymore if Grant County's overall budget. I know some years back when I looked into it, they had quite a bit more federal payments and things that we did at that time at least and they they just had a bigger budget overall for the county, not just the jail, but I don't know. But what they spent it on, of course, is I think what uh, district attorney's asking is. Yeah.
It's just very interesting.
If their staffing is comparable to ours, maybe even one less, um, why does it cost so much more in their budget? Yeah.
Thanks. So the sheriff was a little bit busy down there, um, but he could burn, he's one of the sheriff's annual budget and show up at my house. Cool. So we can break down that cash flow.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think Harney County's done a relatively good job as far as operating this facility with the budget over the years. I believe when I started, we were only funded at like five hundred thousand, so we've been able to increase just because we needed those staffing numbers to go up from what we were initially. But the overall budget on overhead of the operation, I think is, has been pretty good.
I can share this with you, Commissioners Sergeant Wade Waddle.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, from Grant County, he's the world of view. And really, really was complimentary.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, he's great. So I just thought.
That's very good, very good to have as we start in these sessions to move it along. Did you want to sit up here?
No.
No, no. Can I share some thoughts?
Yeah.
Um, so one of the things I shared with the group was I was going to try to get, um, the plans for the jail in Grant County. Apparently that's not easy because the security purposes.
Yeah. Okay.
And so, uh, what Sergeant, uh, Waddle said was, uh, uh, as we get into the design, uh, he's more than willing to work together to help us figure out the best configurations. And he shared a couple of thoughts. I won't go too deep into it today, but I took a lot of mental notes. For example, on the plumbing, you want to make sure you have access to the plumbing outside of the cell, not inside. Uh, you want to make sure you have a drain in the floor with a little bit of a slam. I mean, just all those things.
You also want shut-off valves for each individual housing.
Yeah, yeah, he said that, yeah.
That is one thing that we really, and we've talked about it over the years, so, uh, the Commissioners and the Sheriffs, that's something that we don't have. So when we have to shut off the a housing unit that's safe, you know, somebody's flooding intentionally, then it really affects all of the individuals that are inside that jail.
I'll start sharing the notes. So Judge, you, uh, you sent over two of the red line changes in the intergovernmental agreement for the Department of Justice. Um, those have been forwarded to the Department of Justice and so anticipate we will receive a final version back with those changes for Court Transponder. Uh, so that's been taken care of. Um, at the last meeting, I shared that I would get a copy of what Representative Owens submitted as a, uh, capital construction request, uh, that's been completed. And by our next meeting, I will have that modified and brought up here for the commission to look at. And if it picks up, we'll send it up to Owen, Redbone's for consideration. So that's fun. Um, one of the things that I found interesting was I also said I was going to look out, look for contractors and engineers to start just having that conversation. We engineering firm, let me get my notes here. Um, who's doing the fairgrounds, um, has experience in these type of facilities. And so, um, I'm hoping to meet with, I'm going to get my messenger circuit to exactly, it's Mike Stu, he's out of, uh, Banks, Oregon. Um, let me read this to you. Uh, thank you. Uh, I agree. Thank you for reaching out. Uh, we engage in all types of critical infrastructure construction. We as a company, I haven't done in jail what we have worked in, built mini-seater facilities, psychiatric wards and hospitals, secure high-tech cells, et cetera. All that experience is completely transferable through County Jail, intake facility and the associate structure. Uh, my intention next week, uh, is to meet with the in-banks and have a conversation. Um, I also have the name of the firm that built, uh, the facility in, uh, Grant County. The challenge I have is, is nineteen ninety-seven, and so I have to keep digging. Um, one of the things that would really help our committee as we start this is I understand that there is an Oregon Counties Association, um, audit checklist. When you get the in-prison, or the jails get reviewed every two years.
Yeah.
They go through.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there any way that you get a copy of that?
It's the Oregon jail standards. So it is published online.
Okay.
Um, yes, I can email you a copy of that.
Because what I'm thinking is when we sit down with the engineer and architect, we lay that out there and say, these are the standards that need to be met and treated as best we can meet those.
I think that we could probably go, I mean, it's there's three hundred and seventeen standards in that, in that, uh, jail standard. So, and that's what we um, we just went through this last summer, um, this past year, that inspection and it's a lot of standards. So a big majority of it is policy and operating procedure. And so if we could go through and kind of skim that down, most of where it's just infrastructure.
Facility, yeah.
Yeah, that's. That would probably be helpful. It could be intimidating, given them the whole thing.
Right, right.
Tenet really, uh, what if, uh, since the Grant County Jail was built back in ninety-seven, what do they say now? Since things have changed a lot in the expectations of the services for inmates, et cetera. What don't they have that they wish they had now at this point, whether it's rooms for some of these other justice center related things, or do they have plenty of that?
No, I think if the, if the sergeant over there, um, I've had discussions with him, we've been insured that facility a few times. They only have, if I remember correctly, two, uh, max custody housing units. So if they get two people that are, have some behavioral issues, they only have those two. The rest of the, the facility is dorm and then they have a su- one suicide watch housing unit. So, um, and then I believe they have two intake cells. So they can get kind of creative, I think, with having those two intake cells. But I know that that's something that they wish that they would have had is maybe some more secure beds.
Okay.
Um, and maybe another suicide housing unit in case you have more than just one. Um, and that's what I would recommend in building a new facility is maybe take one of those spaces that is a dormitory style and turn it into, you know, some secure beds.
Okay. When you say dormitory, it's just open, open bunk? Common area or whatever?
Most of their facility is, um, a dormitory style facility.
I'm in knowing the expert. We've got the expert right here. Um, when I visited with them, they shared three other things in addition. One was fencing it.
Yes.
There's no fence around it.
There is none, and that is one of the standards in the jail standards is having a fence around it.
Um, the other one they mentioned was, it would be engineered, designed for the future.
Yes.
Because the technology is going to change and that standard changes and the last thing you want to do is be gutted out, concrete walls. Uh, and so they said, make sure you have a conduit in there to where you want the wiring and pull it in, pull it out.
Yes.
Um, and then the third thing they shared was, and this is, this is all just engineering architectural.
Right.
Make your, uh, um, mechanic room one more secure and two, uh, larger. Uh, because you just need space if you're taking them back out, jet back to generator. You need room to move it out. And what happened is they put it in and then built around it. And so Northern does stuff out there. And then there's one other thing. We can talk offline because it was.
Once upon a time, Lincoln Building, that's what they did with their boiler room.
Yeah.
They built that boiler room around that way. So when they take that out, it's going to have to come out in pieces.
Yeah.
So my goal, uh, between now and our next time we meet is to have a list of potential contractors as best as I can gather. I'll go to the Oregon Plan Center, um, which is a recognized location for contractors to go to. Uh, and to have a draft RFP, request and proposals with the understanding of the very clear, we'll need help reviewing it. Um, but with the understanding that this is nothing more than we're trying to gather information and ideas right now and to see who may be interested.
To assess the needs and what the cost is ultimately going to be and everything?
Yes, okay. Yeah, so that's my goal. Um, for our next meeting. I was really hoping to have plans here.
On the political side, um, you know, a few years back, the, uh, majority party in its state legislature and the governor, they weren't feeling good about anything related to incarceration, you know, and that, there was a good proposal from Harney County, but it was sort of more that, that political attitude at the time that, that prevailed. Had, do you think that is changing at all or, or might, a different governor, different whatever?
Um, unfortunately, I do not think it's changing. With that said, and I should. With that said, and I should have mentioned this, I apologize, um, Representative Gombert, uh, the state rep out of, uh, Lincoln City. Uh, he and our book, uh, Vice Coaches and Ways and Means, he's putting together a thirty million dollar public safety package.
I remember seeing something about that.
And I think the rationale for that package is, is you can focus on these other efforts, but still be jails. And so I think, uh, that's why that application over to you.
Thirty mi- thirty million, it's not gonna go very far.
You know, what it's gonna require, Commissioner, is, uh, collaboration from these two Oregon legislators. To acknowledge where the real need is. And, uh, um, I can just share with you personally, uh, after knowing, I represent nine counties, uh, this is ridiculous. They're not counting about it, and so, uh, uh, I'll visit with Representative Bobby Lee, I'll represent, uh, fifty, Bree Ziberson, and see if they can hear. I, I can't promise, all I can say is I can just share with them where I believe the need is.
I think another thing that Grant County, to go back to your question, that they wish they had was some space for program.
So. You know the one critical thing I saw as well, and it didn't even click with me? In, in my new law, I kept thinking we needed jail, jail. Um, we need to make sure that you have a sheriff's office attached to the jail. Because of the synergy that comes with that. And one of the things, and again, you're an expert on this, I'm just sharing what I learned, um, there's a synergy of having your jail staff. And then having your sheriff folks right behind you in case there is a real incident.
Right.
Now you have.
Right.
Extra protection.
Right.
It does very likely to, I kept just jail.
Have, have you toured the Lake County jail in the courthouse, still in courthouse, but yeah.
It's bad.
There, uh, well, just for comparison things, when, if you're gonna, maybe a ranking thing or whatever, their, their situation is. Not very good either, just don't tell anyone.
Well, they built, they built their jail on the second floor. So when the, the belt encased the flood, it goes on like the desks of their employees.
Um, regarding things like escorting. Adults in custody over to our, our circuit court, et cetera. Um, if we have a jail that is not here attached with walkways, et cetera, how, how much does that affect things? Not too much?
Well, I think with, we, we really, after COVID or during COVID, we saw, you know, a lot of, um. Computer, you know, technologies come in.
Right.
So the only requirement is, is that they have a right to appear in their trial and their sentencing. So a lot of our appearances happen in our video courtroom anyway, so we would just have to escort for. The trials, which we have to do now anyway, so, uh, it's just a matter of walking them upstairs or, you know, bringing them over here, so.
Okay. Anything related to a pandemic health crisis besides, um, the tele. Uh, the ability to, to be on screen that we need to plan for? Um, for jail?
Yeah, I think that there's some new, you know, air handling systems that have been developed that I think, you know, when we do this, that when we build any facility, we should look into. And, you know, maybe there's some possible funds, but we had discussed when we were, um, walking through the Lincoln Building, how. Maybe we can tap into some different funds, you know, energy efficient things and see what we can get.
I'm not, and, and speaking of different funds for different elements of this project. Um, and I don't know, maybe this is down the road a little bit or whatever, but I had a con- uh, conversation with the G O D C here a month or so ago. And they mentioned about stacking funding.
Hmm.
So i- i- is, is that something that we should be looking at and maybe later on or now, or I don't know? What is stacking? They're talking about grading? Are they the same? Stacking funding, different types of funding.
For one project.
For one project, for different. They just call it rating, okay. Yeah, okay.
So one of the things that we built into the intergovernmental agreement, that the Department of Justice is that the county could take ten percent. And use it for administrative engineering design and the grant writer. And so if we thought that it made sense to, to do that, which I'm pretty sure it's going to. And you could retain somebody, uh, to be the writer and to oversee some of this.
Yeah, I just wondered, I mean, if there's.
So I just.
If there's, you know, individuals out there that are in tune to that. To that arena for, for looking for different types of funding and, um, and going after it.
So here's the challenge, because what you're thinking is very logical, it's very logical. The challenge is, every one of us in each room has different expertises, and so I may be an expert on. Transportation funding, you may be an expert on healthcare funding, and so trying to find that exact person that can do all of that will be challenging.
Okay.
Not impossible, but I don't know anything about security, and so that's the challenge of buying. What you really want, um, is a good writer who has experience in investigation. And I have a person I'm thinking about that may be perfectly involved. Uh, her name is Gina Perkins, she's the former owner of the Baker City record career. Uh, so she knows how to write, she knows how to investigate, and. She has a lot of free time right now, so I'm just thinking that's the type of person we need.
I, I was just curious, this, cause we're obviously gonna, I, I don't have any, we don't have any idea crystal ball what the legislature might give us in increased funding, but. But we're obviously gonna have to find other avenues and.
Yes, sir.
Uh, other opportunities for funding.
Yes, sir.
Um, I can, you know, without, I could go without saying this really, but, um. Even in this last election, you look around the state at school, at education bonds that failed. We're, we're not gonna pass a bond in Harney County for, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not worried about it politically or anything else, but we're just not gonna pass one here. So we've got to find those opportunities that are out there to fund this.
And you, you made that very clear to me. You made it very clear to everyone, and so, uh, part of what I'm proceeding with is the understanding that. We can only build what we can fund then, and so right now we have the sources we have, but pursuing another three. And, uh, I fully anticipate we're gonna turn over other rocks to work through that.
And, and, you know, across the state, the competition and the process for, um, funding new courthouses and stuff is so. Complex and we are at such a disadvantage, and people get in the queue for years and years, counties before they get it done. So to the extent, even though it isn't what, what, what our big dream was, that we can focus on the jail. With some of these additional things attached, we may have a better chance.
Yeah, Commissioner, I didn't mean you enough, what's your, you're a thousand percent correct. If you're a county senior from the Columbia River, you have access to lots of different financial resources. That the counties in, in the wilderness east of Oregon do not.
Right.
And it's unfair, and they need to figure that out.
And when there was a lot of work done by our legislators to try to, you know. Acknowledge that and find a path for the counties like out in our region.
Right.
All the commissioners went to war for their own counties and it, it didn't, the cooperation wasn't there, so.
In, in all the county, they're in the process of building a new courthouse. Um, it was a twelve and a half million match to the state. Well, they're able to access all these different funds, I won't go into the details, that are real, real rural counties.
Okay, right, they get all that wind power and other things that are helpful to them that we don't have. The, the disparity in pilt even, um, pilt payment just came out, and, um. We got one point four million. You look at.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You look at, um. Oh, I can't, off the top of my head now, um, there's another, another county got like. Four million, five million, and they have not even half of what we have for public lands. Um. So, you know, and that's, and that's one of our main, you know, outside of our property taxing, that's one of our main funding revenues, um. Until we gain more population and get more pilt in our, cause that's kind of what bases it is, the population numbers. But.
So I will, I'll be working with folks to turn over every stone we can.
Um, Pitt County is the one I was thinking of, they got twice as much as us in their public lands as nine hundred and forty thousand, and we're at. Um, four, so quarter of what we have for, we have four point four million now.
So I just want to be clear for the public number, right now, my mindset is, we have. An allocation in Department of Justice, we have the Merkley money, that's what I'm operating off of right now. If we're able to successfully get more money, I will come back and say, we have more money, how do we, how do we spend it? But right now it's based upon what we have. That's the direction I'm hearing.
Yeah.
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 It will be interesting to see, you know, Grant County built that jail, like you were saying, two points left and none, and it'd be interesting to see. What it looks like nowadays to build the same authority, and what we're looking at, and if, you know, cause I think we do have quite a bit of funds. You know, allocated towards this project, could we get a facility with what we have?
My guess is you're, were, we are gonna be probably a three to four million short of where we are right now. We're gonna have to raise that fair enough, anyhow. Just. Yes.
Um, so I wasn't, I, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting that y'all had, um. And there's hurdles to any, any, any location or any site that we choose or, or decide to move with. But we're still looking at, at moving ahead with Lincoln property, is that what we're?
That's my understanding, is the, the ground behind the school.
And we were also talking about, um. The building as it sits, and then, you know, maybe going after different funding for, um. I don't know if you want, I am sure you have a lot more experience in those types of funds as far as being energy efficient. Heating and those types of things, if we could start maybe going after some of those funds, we could get the Lincoln Building fixed with. Heating source, K C, electrical, those types of things, um, to try to get that building operable. At a lower expense to the county than what the, the school district was paying for, for their utility services. So that's something I think that it would is, would be worth looking into for us.
Yeah, well, after, I think, from, in my understanding, after the brownfields cleanup is done. And the heating oil tank is out of there, there won't be any heat.
Yeah, there won't be.
So, so the way it is, it won't, we'll have to have a heating system before we can even begin to occupy it.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's part of what we asked the engineering firm in this, is take a look. Will the cost benefitable?
And I.
You guys can decide.
I think the, the original idea was, is the, the biomass line runs right by the building.
Mm-hmm.
And if, if the whole building is converted to the biomass hot water heating system. Then you hopefully, potentially have one control room that would take care of those facilities.
And what would that look like for costs? I know that Commissioner Shellman expressed some concern in our last meeting regarding. The annual cost, the school district is spending on that building. Do you know?
I don't have any.
Cost then.
Yeah, I don't have any idea at this point, I, I don't know what they were paying, I haven't seen any numbers, I don't know what the school was paying previously in heating costs, uh. Utility costs for the, for the building, um. Have to reach out to the school district and see if I can get them to produce some bill and, you know, years passed. Um. As a comparison anyway, as far as using that, converting to that kind of a system.
Um, so goal number one of making sure that three million is secured is almost checked out.
That's cool, yeah.
Excellent.
Next meeting?
So next week's, uh, both of July, it'll be the next Thursday right after that.
Yes. You can't always all come, but also schedule it. Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, my, your expectation for me should be that I will have a list of potential engineers and contractors who have experience. And a draft RFP, like you start cutting up and working through.
Anything on our end.
Listen to her. Cause I learned so much.
Anything that I can do to provide? Just please let me know.
Well, this is crazy because the folks are, this gentleman in Grant County was very complimentary of you, and saying, oh, she does it. And, uh. Just said, when we get to designing engineering, you're the expert.
I appreciate that. And if anybody is interested in going and taking a, I mean, it. It, it's always beneficial to me to tour again in other facilities, that sometimes you see things that you missed the first time. But if anybody, Commissioners, wanna go for Grant County, I'm more than happy to.
I've never seen it, maybe sometime.
Go look at it.
Yeah. The truth, I don't.
I haven't been put in jail up there yet. That, that might be good, I have not seen it either.
Yes, I think that would be great, and that would really help. We should tour this one in the morning before we go over, so that everyone can ask.
Yeah, what, what if we reverse the little bit here?
Yeah.
What if I still, uh, get, I'm gonna so I can show you, we have, get a draft letter, get the RFP, what if we try to put something together for our next meeting? Is it really help folks visualize?
It absolutely does, it's an eye opener, so yeah.
Yeah, don't be afraid, it, it's not great, but when you put something in front of people, then they can always start.
Right.
Getting involved more.
Your calendar, if we try to do this, you know, where Grant County.
We. Oh, I, I don't know about my schedule, I, like, right now I gotta go to another meeting, but, um, I'll always try to come.
Our director's conference is the end, host of in Grant County, I think it's the tenth and eleventh, so I'll be there. Okay.
My, my schedule, it would be good to block it right now because my schedule is wide open on the eleven.
Okay. Right? Yeah.
It, it really is like, because all of a sudden you're like, duh.
Yeah.
This is how we should be doing it.
Oh, yeah, I mean, this has been kicked down the road many decades and.
Many.
And let's make something happen on this watch if we can, right? Thank you, Greg.
Good to see you, folks, have a happy fourth.
Thank you.
You too.
You too, drive safe.
I'm turning under a rock next to you.
I'm going under a rock and I'm not gonna be found.